This time we'll call the Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself are the county supervisors. Lisa Seersolo today from the auditor's office and Luanne Golti, our administrative assistant is there to help us along the way. First item on our agenda this morning is David Drier, Jackson County engineer. Good morning, David.
Good morning. The good news is that I have no driveway permits today.
That's good.
That's not good news.
There's entrance permits for the houses. I'm just taking a breather. Anyways, our first item is possible action on hiring our maintenance mechanic. We offered the position to the number one candidate Chad Beach. There were probably six applicants for the mechanic position. We interviewed three. With the best qualifications and school training with respect to certifications and things. And so we offered it to Chad and he's accepted and we hope to start him. I think it's May third.
You need action on that. I would make a motion to hire Mr. Beach as presented. Second, what was a motion in a second to author and hired Chad Beach as the new mechanic? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. And then we got a presentation from representatives from Big Iron. It's an auction company that sells construction equipment. And they're interested in working with the county and selling some of its surplus equipment that we currently now trade in when we purchase new equipment. So I will let you guys do your presentation. They, I know they do a lot of work with some of the nearby counties. I had a chance to speak with the county engineer for Jones County this morning and they're very happy with the company and the results they've been seeing. And so I guess the references with that said.
All right, I'm just gonna hand up. My name is Russ Radloff. I'm the Big Iron Sales Rep for Jackson County. Just gonna hand out a brochure about our company. For those of you who don't know really what we do, we are an online auction company. We have an auction every Wednesday of every week. And we're always out four or five weeks ahead. So like right now, we're, we're out to the middle or at the end of May. So like if somebody lists a piece of equipment with us right now, this week, it would sell on the Wednesday online auction in May. And the first flyer David handed out to you was some auction results that that we've had. I just wanted to show you that we do work with other Iowa counties on selling, selling their used equipment. And the, the big thing, I guess our claim to fame with Big Iron is the reach you will get. We go, we have over three hundred eighty thousand registered bidders and all over the country and actually in other countries, Canada, Mexico. Kind of get a global reach, so to speak. If you, if you list anything with us. So.
Commissions, please.
It commissions are gonna depend on how much volume you have. It's per sale. So like if you, if you list one item with us, I always say anywhere from seven to eleven percent, the more volume we have, we get up over a hundred thousand, it'll be on the lower end. That's the end point. We're an unreserved auction, which means the buyers who bid on, bid on the equipment have more confidence that they're, they're gonna bid it up higher and we have no buyer's fees. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of equipment auctions have buyer's fees now. We do not.
So I guess, David, you feel that rather than trade, this would be a better?
Well, it would be, maybe we do like Jones did and you just start with the tandem axle dump or a grader and see how it goes. What makes me nervous is the no reserves. So technically, somebody could walk away with a piece of equipment for twenty thousand dollars. Now, does that happen? I don't know. But.
I see that side of it. I also see the side of it. I understand that you have a global reach.
Right.
But that still means to me, somebody's gonna buy a piece of equipment, a grader. They wanna inspect it or look at it. I mean, I know we can take pictures, but.
Well, they would take the pictures.
Yeah, I, I'll come out. When you list it with us, I'll come out and take several pictures of it and do a video of it. If the buyer wants to look at it, they have to do that before they buy it.
Yeah, that is.
About ninety-five percent of our items anymore are going, being sold side unseen. So.
And Jones County said that they aren't getting inundated with questions, you know, one or two people. More questions they receive on their tandem axle dump truck than on the grader. The graders, they've been selling out Western United States to ranchers and oil fields and things, I guess. So.
So how does that greater compare to the trade that we just traded?
Well, this auction is a year or so old. You gotta be, we wanna compare apples to apples. It's an all-wheel drive and they got fifty-three, seven. We sold our last John Deere grader, which was not an all-wheel drive, which was an O nine for fifty-five thousand. Now, I don't know if you have some current results for what graders are going for that is more.
You had the one under your.
Yeah, we sold one in March for seventy-six. It was all wheel drive. But I mean, I'd put us against any trade any day of the week with we're taking the middleman right out of it. We are, we're selling to the end user ninety percent of the time. So there's not a dealer making a, making a dollar off you guys on this.
Well, we've seen trade-ins, I think, the last dump trucks from five thousand to forty thousand for the same truck. And that's just.
Yeah, the last range for a freight line arranged from fifteen to twenty-five. And international seven thousand series, there was a five thousand to forty thousand range. So obviously the forty thousand changed and didn't, we didn't purchase from them. So, so I mean, it's I think it's an idea that maybe we just put a toe in the water and see how it goes. Maybe it's the best thing since sliced bread.
I, I understand a no reserve part of it.
Yeah.
Again, there's a lot of bidders, which is a good thing.
Yeah, you get way more bidders. I put a four-wheel drive tractor on there. In fact, it's gonna sell a week from Wednesday. And it's already got forty-three bids on it. I mean, if you have a live auction.
Well, I know that, you know, your farm equipment right now is.
He is an auctioneer.
I mean, your farm equipment is outrageous right now. It's just unbelievable, you know, if you travel the country. Yeah, I don't have any.
I, I don't. You know, like you say, put your foot in the water and see.
I mean, they don't have to do anything today. It was just informational. The other thing is we've already purchased for twenty-three. So we wouldn't do anything till next year's budget. And and then two, there are a number of auction companies out there. Why is yours better than Purple Wave and other companies?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's because we're the full service approach. The toughest thing you guys will have to do is call Russ. He'll come out, take pictures, videos, take care of everything, take care of the financial side of it, our office, then send you guys the money direct. You don't have to worry about bad checks, anything like that. A lot of our competition, you guys would.
You have to collect the money.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the nice thing is we take care of all that. We send you guys a check. Absolutely. There's no worries about it. The buyers come and actually pick up the equipment. So that's another thing you guys don't have to worry about. If this is gonna blow a tire going down the road or, you know, whatever might happen.
What happens if the buyer backs out? We just have to put it back up or?
Yeah.
You have a, they have an option. You can re-list it or you can take the second highest bidder.
Okay.
If you want.
And then they're banned from our site and everything. So.
I signed up for an account for informational today and really disappointed that I couldn't bid on my own auction. So. It was just an informational.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't have one.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
You're trying to find a better way to get more stuff for less money.
Absolutely.
Like everybody else.
Appreciate your time.
The same one I get, yeah.
Do you private sales too?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for individual company businesses, whichever.
My brother's got a trucking, so.
You got Russ's number now.
I do.
I've jumped on, looked at the site and helped with the kind of myself.
So you said you're.
Who do you sell with? Just yourself or?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Two years.
Really?
Cool. Um, are you finished? Yeah, okay. So I had an interesting concept or idea thrown at me the other day. So are like our, some of our secondary roads, they have a lot of trees, large trees, overhanging trees, da-da-da. Would, would it be an idea to get like Kevin to go mark these? And see what kind of value here is and then just throw it out to bid to these loggers to say, hey, you, you cut them, you clean them up and what are they worth?
I suppose I don't.
It's an interesting concept because, you know, we talked, I talked to this gentleman and he talked about one section of road and he's kinda said, you know, there's a hundred trees that are in this four mile stretch and many of them are wellness, he said.
Well, we've also had people come in and they canopy over the road, so the sun never hits it. So, you know, they don't.
But it would be, you know, maybe we could get, generate some income off of them and wouldn't have to do the work. It's a thought.
Which, which road was that?
Well, let's not disclose that. Them all those don't come up missing.
Yes, that would be very.
So typically, if you're gonna cut trees in the ditch, you ask permission from the landlord.
And their property owner.
Well, we have right away the first.
Well, that's.
It's a right away for a road. It's not for.
Historically, we offered it to the property owners. Because the, the road is on an easement though.
So center.
Okay, so taking this one step further. Why aren't we planting trees down both sides of all of our roads? There's a country in Africa that started growing tea trees centuries ago. And they plant so many trees every year and they just rotate it and they auction those off for shipbuilding.
Well, then you gotta maintain all that though.
Well, they have, well, we know taxes because that pays for everything.
Well, around the, the snow traps and, and the soft roads and things, just like you said, the canopies. At the same time, people like canopy roads because they're they're beautiful, some of those.
Yeah.
Valleys and things with the trees and things.
No, it's just a thought. I never thought of the, I never thought of the, actually, the property owner. Does the property owner own that tree then?
It's.
Fine line.
It's a great area.
I would contact Sarah. There's a lawsuit that I'm aware of concerning that.
I see.
Yeah, we did. We did people pick up, cut timber. The Dubuque trimmed and then the property owner got all excited saying that was his timber and.
Makes sense.
All right.
Yeah, I can check with her there and see what she says.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, David. Well, I don't see our next. Joanne, unless she's out in the hall. Do you wanna do yours?
Mine's short and sweet this morning. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April twelfth, twenty twenty-two board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and closed session minutes written by Humans Resource Administrator Becky Chavon and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second.
The motion in a second to approve the minutes of the meetings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve a special class A liquor license, class B wine permit, living quarters for Sunday sales to the Oakland Mail LLC at twenty-two zero ninety-five, Highway sixty-four. Okay, May first, twenty twenty-two through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I would move to approve.
I would second.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
None.
Seeing none. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. And abstaining, abstaining. Motion carried.
And that's all that I have to report today. Ready for the cemetery?
Yeah, we're ready for the cemetery commission. Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
We have a job for you. Who owns the trees in the right way? Check it out for us.
We're contemplating having loggers. See if they'll mind.
It's a certain mark that would give us the value, I would think, anyway, if that's the case. We have a lot of interest now that that's out there.
Good morning. At this time, we're joined by the Pioneer Cemetery Commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So several things on our agenda. The first one we should talk about is Russell Farm. It's a cemetery. It's near Preston and it's owned by a doctor. Of course, it is Dr. Cobb. And he is, he owns the cemetery and he we don't have easement or ownerships. Our concern is, is that if we and, and he's, he's not very, not willing to, to give us ownership at this point. So concerned that the cemetery is gonna be lost if we don't at some point restore it. So we would like your permission to restore it, even though we don't own that cemetery. And we've done a rough estimate. We think it'd cost about seven thousand dollars to to restore and fence that cemetery. Is there any possibility I might sell it? Sell the cemetery to us?
Yes.
I don't know about that.
Well, technically, technically is owned by who right now?
It's, it's not accepted off the property, so it's owned by Dr. Cobb. Okay. So, you know, there's, I suppose there are legal, you know, and I don't know all the legal implications, but we could potentially condemn it and force him. But I'm not, not sure when.
I mean, we went through this before with everybody Springbrook, you know. I mean, we had, he, he basically gave us permission to go in there, but he wasn't gonna give us an easement.
On that, that's another topic. So, yes.
So how are you saying you're gonna get in here to restore this?
Well, we would have, if we have your permission to do that and spend the funds, we would next, next need to go to him and ask for permission for access. Now, we don't know what possibilities are that he's gonna give us access, but we didn't wanna go to him before we discussed it with you.
Is he okay with restoring it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, we've actually talked with him twice. Early on, he, it sounded like there was a possibility. But it's kinda like he went home and thought about it, you know, or talked to his attorney. But he has a point. It's at the end of a very long lane. And the house used to be rented out and it's been torn down now. And he's got a set of old buildings back there and he keeps his very expensive toys in that building. He's a hunter and he talked earlier about making this into a hunting preserve. So there's probably quite a bit of stuff in this building. So he's very concerned. He wants to keep a locked gate there all the time at the entry point into this property. And he just doesn't want anyone around because it would be so easy for someone to go in and totally empty the building. And I think that's the main thing. He has walked back with us to the cemetery. It's not too far from the buildings, but it's in, in a little field. And as you can see from the photos, it's in really bad shape. The earlier landowner, Mr. Swanson from Illinois, had given us permission for the commissioner to go in, cut down the trees, burn the stuff and you'll see those, that in the pictures as well. And we've done that so long ago. It's been sprayed quite a few times since then. There's probably one or two standing monuments and tall, tall weeds and no, it hasn't had a fence for years and years and years. So it's at the point, you know, in the next twenty years or so, it's gonna be totally gone. We would like to protect it. And maybe have it mowed twice a year if Dr. Cobb.
Well, it's unfortunate that he, that you should take him on a tour of those that you've restored so that he can see the professionalism that your group has. And maybe he would be more receptive because it's incredible what you guys have done. And it's unfortunate that he doesn't see the value in having that done in his property.
Well, we're not sure that he does it yet, but I guess they're approaching us to let the go-ahead contact him with what you're saying, right, George? Right? I, I mean, I don't see any harm in that. And then let's see where he goes with it. Maybe he wants a tour at that point and says, you know.
And maybe it could be something like maybe once a year. He could have an open house where he could be there to watch, you know, and people could come and see it or, you know, do a tour or something like that too. And then keep the gate locked all the other time. That'd be another compromise.
Yeah, the other side of coin is typically once they're restored, there's very few visitors.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably be no visitors.
Your work goes unnoticed. Say, it's sad to say, your work goes unnoticed, right? You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's tremendous amount of work and it's, it's a great asset to, I feel, to the, to, to the respect of the, of the people that are there anyway. So.
Maybe you should video a couple of your cemeteries. If you don't think, get in there in person, show them the before and after.
So, but I guess it, you know, our point was, if you object to us spending the money, you may not ever turn the property over to us.
Right.
But we would like to restore it, save the cemetery. Even if it's, you know, even if it's his property.
I think it's a good thing to do.
I think it too.
Do you?
It's history and it's, I mean, there's, there's people that are buried there that, that should be respected too.
I don't have a problem with the cost. Okay, associated, you know, I do have an issue. We have a legal battle going forward. You know, that's a different that's a different talk in our, in our meeting.
So is there an issue with insurance? How the insurance if we are on private property?
I guess we would probably have to contact our agent and see what they have to say about that.
When Swanson's on this, we actually went through that. Because at that time, as Joanne stated, they allowed us to go on and, and work on it. They just didn't wanna give us a deed and they didn't wanna give us an easement. And what we got from Chris Minnicky at the time was that the county's general liability would provide coverage for the landowner as an additional insured in the event if we had an agreement allowing us to access, maintain and operate it. It doesn't absolve them of liability, but it would basically say the county's insurance comes first.
Okay, so the only issue I see is like you, like you say, you have some of these large trees, which I'm guessing you'd have somebody come in and.
They're done. They're gone now. The trees have been.
But I mean, I, I don't expect you or you to go out there, cut your street. You know what I'm saying? Somebody professional has their own insurance that goes in there and are covered.
I would get a certificate of insurance from our carrier now, take with you to this meeting, just to show that, you know, there's no liability there for them.
And we have been, we have changed insurance agents, so we'd have to make sure that the England agencies sees it the same way that the former insurance agent did.
And whatever it takes, I mean, I think it just needs to be done still. We can show him that we're trying not to do any harm or create any.
You need action to move forward with the cost association? Are you just asking?
I think it's, you know, it'll fit within our budget.
Yeah, no, we haven't had a major.
I don't, I don't have any, I don't, I don't have any issues with moving forward.
I don't either.
All right, so then you brought up the Bud Cemetery near Springbrook for the landowner access easement to the cemetery. We're working on, and Sarah has prepared for us a draft of an easement access easement for that cemetery. And we, we're attempting to contact that landowner to, the the renter has been very, very good to us, allowed us to go in. And so we've, we're almost, well, we're finished restoring it. We need to fence it and do some landscaping this year. But other than that, it's, it's really, it's finished. So.
I would just like to say that this situation's a little different than Russell because we do own the cemetery. So we can force them to give us an access easement as opposed to Russell. We can only ask. We don't have the right to, to force them to give us.
So again, we've talked about this many, many times. So there is a utility easement that we cannot really find, is that correct? Going right down the valley? I mean, I've been out there and I drove up in there. So are we basically talking about an easement from the utilities up to the top of the hill?
No, the whole thing from the streets. And even if we found the utility easement, we would still have to have our own. It would just have given us a we would have had to pay for the survey.
Sure.
To get the easement.
I mean, it is a little jaunt down in there, you know.
And we, we had the survey done, so we have, have that down too. So we have, I think we have most of what we need. We just need to get ahold of the land, landowner.
Well, and I've done that several times. I've talked to him also, you know, and he, I mean, basically after Dan passed away, that, I mean, he has interest in it, but he has several interests in other things also. So it's like away from his eyesight, so it's, it's not on the top of his list, of course. And, and does this mean like legal action, Sarah, or does this?
So because we own the cemetery, we can't go to condemnation. We're not there yet. Just like with any condemnation that we do, we have to engage in good faith negotiation. So that's where we're at now.
That's what I'd like.
Um, what I can tell you also is that Jennifer Conlin Clemmons, I'm sorry, Clemmons Conlin, who's an attorney in Dubuque, is also listed as a registered agent for that LLC. So I would, my suggestion's going to be, and we're gonna meet after this meeting, to send a copy of the easement with a letter to both the son and the registered agent attorney. And that might actually get us moving for, for, further forward if we're engaging her as well.
That's a good idea.
That'd be a great idea.
Get your attention. Okay. So that's just mostly for information. The, the next item on the topic then is Codfish Hollow Cemetery and serve the documents for them to sign.
Lisa has the number for the resolution and how do you provide it?
I think the childless resolution is eight, eight, nine, dash, zero, four, dash, one, nine, dash, twenty, twenty-two.
So, so you just explained that.
So, um, this cemetery is currently being taken care of by the Coqueta Township Trustees. They, I don't think there's any burial that have been done for quite some time. So qualifies as a pioneer cemetery and they're interested in. Quite some time. So qualifies as a Pioneer Cemetery and they're interested in having Pioneer Cemetery Commission take over jurisdiction maintenance. They have actually, um, signed a. Document that I titled Transfer Jurisdiction, which I will be filing with the reporter's office. Um, because we actually have a legal description. Um, I think we even maybe have a parcel number for that cemetery. And then what we're asking the board to do is a resolution officially accepting jurisdiction. So it's very clear. We have the paper trail that the Pioneer Cemetery Commission now has jurisdiction and maintenance. Um, obligations for that cemetery.
And is this cemetery already restored? Or?
Has been maintained, but there are several stones that need to be repaired and there's trees that need to come out. Uh, and I don't know that the fence is in very good condition. The, the lady that lives next door, I believe, intends or wants to continue to mow. So they'd be in that's, that's fine with us. Uh, but there, I think that the maintenance issues like the trees and the fence and the, and the stones is probably more than. They don't have a group of volunteers like we do.
I think there's like thirteen trees there. Most of them are evergreen and. And in very poor condition. There'll be some tree cutting, I would imagine.
Uh, you need action on this?
Yep. Approve the resolution if we intend to let the. Trustees give it the. Power over it to the Pioneer Cemetery, but the trustees have agreed to that.
Yes, I have the document and back there. Uh, yes.
I would make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion in a second to approve resolution eight, eight, nine, dash, oh, four, dash, one, nine. Dash twenty, twenty-two resolution accepting jurisdiction and control of the Codfish Hollow Cemetery for the McCoke County Township Trustees. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
I motion carry.
And then George, I don't know if you have this on your agenda as well, but the Goddard Cemetery. I've done a resolution for that as well, for the same reason. That's the one that a few years ago I'd write and worked with the South Fork Trustees. Um, and again, I just want to have that clarification that we are accepting jurisdictions. There's no question. Um, because the affidavit of possession that was filed, I don't think did what we wanted. I mean. I don't think it gives us that jurisdiction. Necessarily. So I think by doing this resolution, which is similar to the one you just, um, authorized. It would make it clear again that the Pioneer Cemetery is now, it's under their jurisdiction.
Okay, this is resolution eight, eight, nine, oh, dash, oh, four, dash, one, nine, dash, twenty, twenty-two. Resolution accepting jurisdiction and control of the Goddard Cemetery, AKA Goddard Cemetery from the. South Fork Township Trustees. Like motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
I motion carry.
Okay, another topic we mentioned to you and, um, I requested to be on the agenda, but I don't say it here. As we would like to hire an external attorney to do some of the real estate issues that we are coming up with. And Sarah has done a good job of some of these issues, um, but we know we're not her top priority. I know, you know, and some of them, we would like them to move, move along and get some resolution. One of those would be the Crab Cemetery on the Morehead property. We need, we need to clarify whether or not we have what rights we have and how far we want to go to push that. To, to get some, some property there. And that's, that's a scenario where the individual has, um, rodeo livestock in a pasture next to his. This is in his barns and facilities and he bulldozed that cemetery. And so it was on a, I guess I would consider a knoll, you know, a small hill. And he flattened it out and gave the stones to Joe and so that. The actual spot where the cemetery was is, is probably not. Not going to be, uh, where we could re- replace it, but we have asked him to give us property. A, a spot on the property where we could put the stones back, at least in close proximity. Uh, he offered a corner of the intersection there between the, uh. I don't remember what the highway road is and there's a gravel road at the intersection and. We had the county engineer go look at it and he said, no, that's, that's county right of way. And if they do some work with the roads, there would be, you know, they couldn't allow us to put the, the stones in that spot. So. So actually, um, Morehead was attempting to offer us property that wasn't his. Um, so it wasn't very productive, but we, we do need to decide if we are willing to. Pressure him into doing something or forcing him to do something legally. Or if we're just, you know, abandoning that site.
Well, when this first happened, you know, it was really against the law for him to do this. And nothing ever happened about that, you know, which really upset me because he should have been charged with some kind of a, a criminal act. And to just take the stones and pile them under a tree and forget the cemetery was even ever there. I mean, it was, to me, it was inexcusable that nothing didn't happen.
And did they unearth any, uh, caskets and stuff with the bulldozing?
Well. We don't know. All we know is he, he saved seven or eight stones for us, but. Um, one of the other commissioners and I walked the area. He gave us permission to do that. And, uh, we did find a handmade stone. It was rock with. A name on it. So who knows how many of those.
That's true.
There were, he hadn't noticed it, you know, and there were probably others. Uh, but as far as we know, of course, it's quite an old cemetery. I don't remember the dates on that, but.
Early, any family names or, you know, any idea?
No. And we tried immediately.
I know you did.
Yeah, we really did.
So are you looking for permission to get outside counsel to see if there's a action that could be taken? That's what you're asking for?
Yes.
If it's within your budget, I don't have an issue with.
I'm all for it.
Next, I go ahead.
Okay. And if there's any way that they can make him pay for it, I would say make him pay for it.
Early on, um, he almost agreed to give us a spot along the road, which. Would have required a culvert. And, uh, we talked to him about a rodeo fence behind the cemetery. To save the cemetery and he would be responsible for that. And that we would put a little fence to the front, but we expected him to pay part of this expense. And he almost agreed to that. And he said, I'll talk it over with my family. And then the next time I talked to him, he said, well, we talked it over and decided not to, to have it there. You know, a cemetery is such a permanent thing. That was his exact words.
Exactly, it's supposed to be.
Supposed to be, and you eliminated the permanent thing.
I think that would be a nice location because it's visible for people to see and be used to get to. And I think that would be.
Yeah. There was a spot there, but. You know, he's not thinking about the cemetery part of it at all. He's just thinking of his own.
Yeah, to further it complicated, he transferred the property to his son, I think, effective January first.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, I don't know if that, you know. Makes it more difficult for us to bring action or not, but, um, so those, but those are the kind of the issues that, you know, I'd like to explore.
I think you should.
Yeah, I think so too.
I mean, I guess you have to get a reasonable estimate of what your price cost might be out of your budget to, to pursue that. And I mean, even if you want an idea of what it's going to cost to pursue something, I think.
And I don't know what a rodeo fence would cost across the back, but I would say if you need to go there, I would build that fence too. I mean, that's an option.
Yeah.
Some way to get it.
I think you need some type of an alternative. And I think you need an outside attorney to help you.
This happened in two oh four.
Yeah.
So.
A long time ago.
Eighteen years ago already.
And, uh.
I remember when you came in, how upset we were that it never happened.
Yeah.
Now, the one alternative we've discussed is if we, if we don't feel it's feasible. To pressure him and to, to condemn that property. We could put those stones in one of the close by cemeteries that we already have access to and. But, yeah, that's, that's, that's not, that's not what Joe wants to do.
I agree with Joe.
That should be where it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
I think we should explore.
Yeah. Absolutely.
You know, as far as we can go and getting it as close to the original location as possible. With a sign that this is not the original.
Absolutely.
Okay, so last item on my notes is to, we are, we, and we don't have it scheduled yet, but we're planning to. Have a tour of at least a group of the Pioneer Cemeteries for, because we have several new. Commitment, commission members. And so we'd like them to at least see what has, is, has been done and get an idea of. You know, what, what the work, you know, in the past. So we would like to invite the three of you, if you're interested.
If it works in our schedule, I think that would be wonderful.
So we'll, we'll keep you posted as to.
You don't have any proposed dates or times or anything?
We, we suggested that they, and we got a couple of, of volunteering, one of the commission members working on it. We suggested they look at May to see if we can find a date. And I, you know, I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but we'll, we'll see.
Keep it posted, I guess.
Alright.
I don't know how many you'd have, but. Perhaps we could get the RTA to take up one of their vans on the tour. As we could ride together. We're all on the RTA board, so we could certainly, we could certainly talk to them and see if that would be available.
Years ago, we had quite a few tours and that's what we did. Then that tour was open to the public. So we had.
We, we hadn't considered the public at this point because we're trying to get, just at least get our commissioners there, so.
So if you set your date, you know, I'd be kind happy to talk to RTA to see if we could set up something with them.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you for all you do and good luck. Okay, Lisa, it looks like you're, or Luann, it looks like you're up now.
I'm actually going to start this time with my business and then we'll come back to the calendar when I get done with that. Um, the first thing on my, um, actions this morning is to set a special meeting. For April twentieth at five P M. This is an employee evaluation meeting.
Is it five or five thirty?
Five thirty.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, five thirty.
That's. That's tomorrow. I would. You need action on that?
No, yes.
Yeah, I would, I would approve the, set the special meeting for April twentieth at five thirty. Or five, whatever you want to start it.
We have a motion and a second to set a special board meeting on the twentieth of April at five thirty. All those in favor?
Right. What, I have a question yet. Does, is there an end time to that or? Cause, okay.
So you're to midnight if you want to.
No, well, I know there, I think there may be human resources in an attempt to put. To.
There'll be two, um.
Interviews.
Right. Okay. Okay, um, my second action, um, we've had a request for a letter of support. For the development of the former hospital property into senior, into a senior housing complex. So they asked us for letter of support. I gave you a copy of what the Jackson County Economic Alliance letter was. Um, and I basically just took that word for word. If you'd like some changes made, I will do that, but.
The only thing I'd like added is that the only way we'll sign it and support it is if we get the rest of this stuff. And we went through the building.
I guess I'd like to see some further plans of what really, what they're asking and looking to do.
Yeah.
I support the idea of, yeah.
Support the idea of it that way. I don't think they're asking for any money or anything like that.
They're looking for USDA World Development Funds. That's what the, that our support is for. And they did.
Not at this point.
But we do put in there that we want to see the drawings as soon as they have drawings. So that was from the Economic Alliance letter as well.
I guess from the drawings, we can see if some of this stuff needs to go away. I guess that makes motion to approve.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second to submit a letter of support. For the new development, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Right, calendar for this week.
I'll wait that before you, before you move on. We also, which I found a little, um, strange. Is we got a letter from Miss High School teen that's going to run from Mississippi. Um, I wonder if she's sending letters to all the counties in every state. I thought that was really strange. I, I, when I first started, I thought, well, it never says where she's from until you see the return address and it's Mississippi. And I'm thinking. Why would she be seeking a place in, in Iowa?
Yeah.
Unless she has ties to us, but, you know.
So because there is no queen selected in Iowa, she'd be happy to take that place.
She was appointed to take that Iowa, Iowa place.
I would just send her our best wishes, um, and sorry.
Okay, well, I was a little taken aback myself, but, okay.
Okay, now we'll be quiet.
I thought it was one of those student letters. I got one of those this week too, but I thought that's what it was originally, but I wasn't. Okay. Um, four thirty this afternoon, Jack has a Mississippi Valley workforce meeting on the fiscal agent. And that's by Zoom. Doesn't have to drive to Biscayne anymore, so we can cross that off his list. At six o'clock tonight is conservation board meeting and this time it will only be at Hurstville, but it'll be no Zoom for that one. And that's for Larry.
So they still recording Larry or no? Yeah, there's a tape recording on it. And. I made a video.
Video recording?
No, it doesn't.
They don't do that anymore.
Yeah. But I did meet with, uh, Alex on Friday and a couple of board members. We went. And looked at the, uh, Prairie Creek property, the Old Mill Pond area. And he brought his survey equipment out and shot the graveyard stuff and we had a picture of the old dam. And what, the old dam was actually just four foot higher than what's there now. And he shot up the streamways and this couple ways, say you'd have a price for us tonight is to. What that project would look like. And it would be building a stone type dam like on a subtle where they have theirs. With the little raceway down, doing one down by the mill, another one upwards, it's a crossing below the shelter. In there, so when you look in the shelter, the creek kind of goes over and hits the block and comes back. It'd be taking that earth out of there and creating another lake area there and then another drop that you can put down with. It'd be taking that earth out of there and creating another lake area there and then another drop that you can put down with tubes and stuff, so. Just get an idea or feeling of some whatever it costs to do that project. And the city has one point one million they need to use for water project, watershed project from doing last street is part of their loan with S R F funds. And then working with Josh a little bit on, you know, trying to put that together. So possibly, and then the hundred million for, the other thing Governor just signed, you need a sixty percent match, so we can use the street funds to match part of that, just depending on. So hopefully we get something down and be a great recreational thing. There'd be out properties where you could have a beach and and a place to dredge it too. Man, the, the other part is the watershed picture of it for water retention and for, as a silk trap to keep soil and stuff from going in the Mokogu River. It's doing a lot of different things.
Okay, Wednesday night, April twentieth, we know, just set that special meeting for five thirty P M. And that is a closed session meeting. Thursday, April twenty first, you can add to the calendar at eleven o'clock. For Jack, the Together We Build Groundbreaking Committee meeting, and that'll be at Edgerson Hall, Jack. One thirty on Thursday, the twenty first, is the webinar on using multimedia as a showcasing. And that's a Zoom meeting for any of you that want to go. And at six thirty on Thursday is Limestone Gloves R C and D meeting. I'm not sure, I think they have a Zoom option for that. I'm not sure if they have an in-person location for that yet, Jack. Monday, April twenty fifth, at four P M is Early Childhood Iowa Council Meeting in Jewett for Jack. And at five P M is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Board Meeting by Zoom also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty sixth at nine A M. I don't have any other meetings for that day yet anyway.
Not for me.
I just want, some of them, we had our mental health board meeting yesterday. And May sixteenth is when we're going to have the whole county supervisors meeting. To be in Davenport at three o'clock and information will be forthcoming about the location, et cetera. We had a trauma, we had a, a meeting about the trauma room for the schools. And unfortunately, not any of the hundred and twenty-two schools or school districts, I think. But there's twenty-five or twenty-six school districts in our five county area. None of them sent back a letter of interest. In having one of these rooms. So a lot of discussion was had about that yesterday and they talked about, well, maybe the, the letter should have gone to the principal, principals and not the superintendents, because the principals know maybe a little more about what the needs are with children that are having difficulties. And then somebody else said, well, we shouldn't do that because that's sidestepping the superintendent. Well, and then we thought, well, maybe it should have gone to the school boards.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, but it's like I said, well, our superintendent's resigned. So if he got this letter, he's not gonna be around. And I know they've hired a new one, but was, was, was that shared with that individual? So they, I think Erin Rome from A E A and Christie are children's service coordinator. And the management team are gonna get together and see how, how to best attack this, because there is, last week when I was at Eldora, I didn't know that no one had applied. And I told, I told them that we were doing this and Director Garcia was thrilled. So then I come to this week's meeting and they say, no, we didn't have anybody apply. Or send a letter of intent to, to apply. And so that was that meeting. I did have a really long windy trip last Thursday to Eldora, but the facility is amazing. And they have lots of additional cri- trade training out there. And their culinary arts fixed our lunch. And we went on a tour of the, the facility after we had our meeting. Then we went back for lunch and then we finished the tour after the meeting. But we walked in and there was two young men that were there and they were to be our hosts for our lunch. So I, I forget who it was, Mon- Mon- Monica maybe, that says, well, what are we having for lunch? And he says, well, you're having chicken rice soup and Caesar salad and homemade breadsticks. Well, the soup was not soup, it was a casserole. It was, there was no juice to it at all, but it was absolutely delicious. And both of the young men told us about their experiences. And the one that, the oldest one was eighteen, is graduating from their school in May. He's been accepted at, at the junior college. He said he's, was in and out of the facility three times. And he said, his, his mother basically just walked away. And so he, he says he was fortunate that he had grandparents that took custody of him. And he wants to go into either computer science or culinary arts. And he says, maybe I'll do both and then I can just put my recipes on file. So, but very nice young man, it just didn't, I, I, I thought, how in the world could he have gone so wrong? And then the other one, he was seventeen and he is, this is his fourth visit there. And he said, he says, I, I wasn't ready to straighten out. But he says, I am now. And he's, and, and Jason, the director, said that it was, he was almost a model prisoner. They don't call them prisoners, but resident. And he said that uh, when he went out the last time and came back in, and he has three siblings. And their parents gave him to the Department of Human Services to put in foster care, because they just didn't wanna handle with them. So that was pretty sad. And he said he is planning to go to school to become a counselor. He says, they've helped me so much here, I wanna be able to help other people. So it was a, a very good trip, very long. And Luann had printed off perfect directions for me to get there, but I didn't realize there was also a correction. A children's corrections facility there. And so I went to that first, because it was along the highway and I thought, well, that must be where I need to go. So I got there, it was all locked up, I couldn't get in. I pushed this button and talked over the intercom and talked over the intercom and they says, well, we don't have a meeting scheduled. So all I could think of was, because of the bad wind and everything, they changed it to a Zoom meeting. And here I am in Eldora without my iPad to find out if it's a Zoom meeting. And so anyway, I, I just turned, walked out to my car and as I was walking to my car, this man came out and he said, are you sure you're at the right place? And I says, well, I thought I was. He says, are you sure you don't want the training school? And I said, absolutely, I want the training school. He says it's three quarters of a mile farther down the highway. So I, I got there, I went to the building, it was locked. And I thought, oh God, I know I, something's wrong. So then I went to another building and luckily, that's where it was. And I got there five minutes tonight and it started at nine. But another thing, that's enough for that. I did, we did interview for the R C and D director's position. And that's one of the things that we'll be discussing tomorrow, Thursday, is the possible hire of somebody to take Lori's place. We had two, I thought, really good applicants that we interviewed and I'm sure we're gonna make a decision on Thursday. So. Other than that, I don't have anything to say.
So is everything else in a work session? That we're up against?
I believe we have a ten, ten o'clock and a ten thirty, Lynn, I'm gonna give an update, but is the discussion with Dawn Danielson, is that something we're gonna take action on?
No, it's informational, it'll be on Zoom.
Okay. And then Becky is eleven thirty and that's closed session, so. Should we do Dawn in open session and then? Dawn's here. I, 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 I see that. So, anyway. We'll go on and, and Dawn Danielson from E C I A discussing the Brownfield Grant changes. So, hello Dawn.
Hi, how's everybody doing today?
We're doing great.
Good, good. Say, I wanted to touch base with you, give you thanks for your support of, of E C I A's Brownfield Program. Um, we have the R L F, which is the revolving loan funded and assessment grant. I have great news in regards to the assessment grant. We have actually run out of money as far as committed. We have a hundred percent committed. In fact, I have more projects than I have money for under that grant. So it's, it's great to see, you know, that there, the, the communities are utilizing the program. Uh, my goal is to go in the fall when EPA offers the, the grants again and ask for at probably about two million, if not more, for a five-year period. And I'm hoping Clinton would be interested in being a coalition member for that grant as well, Clinton and Jackson County. And, uh, yeah, so right now with the R L F grant, we have, the big change I was wanting to talk to Jackson County about today is we have thirty-eight members as part of our R L F. And Clinton, Jackson County, and the city of Dubuque were kind of the target areas, the priority communities and the key players with that. However, when they, when the R L F was written, I think whoever wrote it thought, oh, the more people that got involved, the more coalition members, the better the grant application. Which there may be some truth to that. However, it actually come, made it more complex, the grant. So every time you wanna do anything with the grant, you have to get somebody to sign off on a site from every single coalition member. So it kinda slows down the process for doing anything with the grant and for getting additional funds. So we've been in conversation with EPA and they have said that we can reorganize that grant. Keeping kind of our key players, which Jackson County and Clinton County are like our key areas that we have identified as, as having a great need for the program. Um, so if we keep the key players in the grant as coalition members, others that maybe are smaller, the cities can kinda ask to be removed from that as a coalition member. And it will help streamline the, the actual uh, processing of activity for the grant. So um, that's kinda what we are looking at doing. I just wanted to make sure that Jackson County was on board with that. One, staying in the R L F and the assessment grant as supporters and coalition members. And then if they're okay with us moving ahead with that kind of a reorganization structure. Like Luann said, we don't need any action today per se on this. Uh, if, you know, you're in agreement uh, as far as staying in as a coalition member, next month or two, I'll come back to the board after I talk to the communities and find out who no longer wants to be a coalition member. And I will have a new memorandum of agreement for the county to sign that will outline who the remaining coalition members will be. So. Hopefully that sounds good to you. Right now with the R L F, we have seventy-five percent of the funds committed. We have two projects under the R L F. We have, one is the Y M C A in Clinton. And the other one is two old buildings that are alongside the municipality buildings in Stanwood. Um, and what I'm hoping to do with the R L F, it's taking a, a good amount of time to kinda wrap our arms around the program, but I'm hoping to make this program one that focuses on asbestos abatement cleanup sites. So taking all the buildings and abiding asbestos from them and helping cities kinda move the needle on those vacant properties, um, so that they can make ready for reuse and make them reproductive or, or productive. Produce, income producing properties again. So it's kinda my goal.
Yes, I don't really see a downside or a negative to the.
No, and I just wanted to keep the, the county informed. I, I know when we came, Mark and I came and talked to you about the assessment grant, there was, you know, a, a, a great desire from the county to kinda stay in the loop and think the last grant, we didn't communicate as, as much. So I've been trying to, you know, every time we send out a request for site approvals, I send an update um, on the assessment grant, about seventy thousand dollars of the grant that we have currently has gone to Jackson County um, properties. One of the sites right now is still the Clinton Engine Site, uh, we're working on that. We're gonna have TerraCon do some pilot testing for potential remedy for permanent uh, solution for that site. And the R L F, to be quite honest, could potentially be a possibility for future use for that site as well, so.
Well, we're certainly interested or keep apprised of any cost share or, you know, membership anyway, so we know who's yet skin in the game and who wants to play, I guess, you know?
Yeah. And as far as cost share for the assessment grant, zero. It doesn't cost any of the coalition members anything, other than the time to sign off on each site. Which, uh, you, your county's been great about getting those sheets back to me real quick uh, for the sites, uh, and so I can process them quickly and move forward on, on those requests. Um, that, that's the only cost of the assessment grant. On the R L F, whoever the applicant is, there is a share cost, but as far as the county itself, if you're not an applicant, you wouldn't have any cost for that. But the, whoever the applicant is, the cost could be, the share cost that they would incur would be anywhere from like twenty to thirty percent share cost that they would incur. So depending on the project.
Well, thank you for everything you do.
Yes.
Well, you're welcome. Yeah. And like I said, as soon as I find out who wants to stay in the coalition, who wants to leave um, and get, get documentation in regards to that, I will redo a new memorandum of agreement. I'll come back, present that to the board with, along with the resolution for you to sign off on. And then though, that documentation goes to EPA for a final approval. Alright, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Alright, bye now.
So the rest of this is just work session, correct?
Yeah, Lynn's gonna give an update on yesterday's meeting and.
Possible action on employee evaluation, is that? So we need the recess and that. There won't be no, no, there won't be no action.
No, the only action is to go into closed session, right?
Oh, okay. There's no further brothers before the board, I make a motion to adjourn.
Lisa's shaking her head, no.
No.
Well, you need to make a mo-, you, you said you're gonna make a motion to what?
Adjourn.
I think you're gonna make a motion to go into closed session.
No, well, not yet, worry.
Well. You can't adjourn, you can't, because you need to make a motion in open session and you need to make a motion to.
We will recess now. This time we'll reconvene the meeting and we're joined by Lynn Boakes, our Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services to report on our meeting yesterday.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. So Jack and I did attend the April monthly governing board meeting for the region. Just a couple of highlights, I guess. One of the big conversations that we're all heavily involved in and very interested in is the whole transition to the hundred percent state funding July first. And how is that going to happen? How does it look to the five member counties? So there is a memorandum of understanding that has been reviewed by all county attorneys and the board approved it, yes. There is a memorandum of understanding that has been reviewed by all county attorneys and the board approved it yesterday. Which will be sent to each individual county. That MOU basically discusses the process that will be used and what expenses will be. Considered to be reimbursable by the region for, um. Expenses that each county incurs by maintaining myself and my counterparts in our respective counties as employees of record. And any, any other support staff or any other staff within the community services offices within the five counties.
You know what? Okay, I think I had it muted.
Oh, do I need to start over?
No, I mean.
Okay. So this memorandum of understanding will be coming before you guys, I would assume at the next meeting. And, um. If we re, if everybody remembers, we, the counties will be reimbursed on a quarterly basis. For the expenses that they pay out during the quarter. For salaries and related payroll expenses and other expenses of maintaining an office as far as, um. Mileage and things like that for the staff that are county employees.
So is our carryover enough to? To bridge that gap?
Well.
We don't have any carryover.
No, uh, that is the other part of.
I guess, but.
Yeah.
Whatever you want.
All of that goes to the region.
Back to the, yeah. So the region's paying the bills, not us. The state.
That, all the money that will be available for a region to spend as of July first will be state dollars. That are sent to the regions on a quarterly basis to arrive before the first of that respective quarter. All of the.
Okay.
Yes, in all of the bills.
So do you have to have a budget every quarter, or what are they sending you, just an amount of?
How the legislation was written was they defined the amount that they would pay per person throughout the entire state. So it's based on population, so currently it's thirty-seven dollars. The max levy that we are able to spend this year is thirty-seven dollars per person within, all across the state. The state has a graduated rate of increase for that for about, I think it's about the next three years, I honestly haven't looked at the legislation recently, but. Um, next year, I believe, for fiscal year twenty-three, I believe, goes to thirty-eight dollars. And then there's, it raises again for fiscal year twenty-four, and then I think there might be a formula act for fiscal year twenty-five and moving forward. I can get that clarified for sure, but that is all laid out in seven files six nineteen, which created the state funding.
It sounds to you when you first said it that we had to pay the bills and then they'd send us a check, but now it's, they send it first and.
The state sends the money to the region, we will process the bills, but we will not send them to the auditor's office for payment locally. In terms of our services that we're paying for. Those bills will be processed within our database system at each county, but sent to the region's fiscal agent, which is Scott County. And then we'll actually issue the payment to the vendors.
Each county will continue to pay their coordinator of disability services.
Right.
Their, their insurance, their IFRS, all of that, and, and thirty percent of the receptionist time over there. And the benefits that go with that, and we can, and I don't know if we can. Allocate funds for the time it takes you to process everything and then, um. Possible, um, expenses of the office.
Okay.
And then quarterly, we'll submit to the region what that total is and they will reimburse us. But she's still an employee of Jackson County.
There, I know, the region does not have any employees, where the mental health region is the employer of record.
So we're just carrying the payroll part of it.
Just carrying it and get reimbursed, reimbursement should be a hundred percent of what's submitted. The counties are responsible to maintain their documentation to support what's submitted to the region on a quarterly basis.
There still has to be a limit, correct? I mean, they're not gonna reimburse us with no questions asked, whatever we say.
One of the things we talked about yesterday was the fact that, you know, there's five CPCs. And are all five making the exact same amount of money, and no, they're not. And it's, it will be what their county is paying them.
And this MOU is for fiscal year FY twenty-three. Uh, I think the consensus yesterday of the governing board, because some of this conversation, like Jack said, did come up. Was let's, let's try this format for a year and see where the questions come up, where the uncertainties lie. In October every year, anybody who is less than full-time equivalent position. Funded by the region. Will need to do a time study, I might have to do one too, even though I'm a full-time MTE to the region. But there will be a time study done every year in October. To try and assure that any partial full-time equivalent that the county builds the region for. That person is actually spending time and doing the region work. Which I think in our county, we may have to relook at that, you know, um, that may change here, I don't know.
It's nice to know it's coming, so you can kinda keep it running on it as time evolve.
Right, and, and there'll be a designated time period, and I think it will be probably sometime in October, maybe for a week, I'm not quite sure how the details of that will unfold. Uh, and this is one of the things that's in that MOU is that each county would do a time study. To make sure that less than full-time equivalent positions are supported by a time study that shows they're actually dedicating that much of their. Paid time to the region. So. Um, the other financial matter that is of interest to the counties. Is that whole process of transferring the funds, as Jack mentioned earlier. By no later than midnight, June thirtieth, every penny out of every county's. Fund ten, mental health fund has to be sent to the region. Because July first magically, there will no more, no, be no more fund ten as we have all been accustomed to. Um, so that will require, uh, a budget amendment by each county to allow to transfer. Any money we have, so whatever fund balance we have sitting there. Will eventually have to get transferred, payment to the region. There is no form, from what David explained yesterday. Or timeline being recommended to the counties as to what the timeline is they wanna do that. Or the form in which they do it, do you wanna send all of the fund balance at once, you wanna keep some back and get closer to the end of the fiscal year and continue to pay. All the expenses out of that fund. That's something that probably you'll have to think about and decide what you think will be the easiest. Because if you deplete the fund by June fifteen, then there has to be a mechanism to. Recoup like any salaries or wages, any of those kinds of expenses that would be paid still by the county.
Okay, and that basically, I mean, we talked yesterday between Lynn and, um. Lisa, they will have to kinda coordinate how we do it and when we do it.
Yeah.
Did they talk about property tax?
After the first of July. They didn't talk about it yesterday.
No.
I would say that would be a good topic to bring up for whoever can be present from Jackson County at May sixteenth, that's six thirty in Scott County. At the, their communication center, there is a. Meeting of all of the boards and supervisors from all five counties and the auditor's offices, that was the information I sent you last week. Um. So I think those are some of the details that still need to be discussed to make sure everybody is in agreement with the. Process moving forward and understands what the process is. And because there are other questions such as. And doesn't happen very often, but every once in a while, the county gets a refund. Um, if we pay for a service and then that person actually maybe, for example, would become Medicaid eligible and the agency could build Medicaid. Then the refund could come to us, what happens to those refunds when they come in after July first?
Is there any traction on the thing? When they go to jail, they don't lose all that stuff, I mean, they're trying to change that, so like. Cause that's a nightmare, because if they lose it here, then they have to try to get it back when they get out and that's just a mess.
Yeah, they're medicated, they're incarcerated, and I believe it's for more than thirty days, they're supposed to. Uh, lose their Medicaid eligibility. I had a conversation one day with a provider and it was suggested that, you know, that's really kind of on the honor system. So Medicaid doesn't always even realize that somebody's been in jail for forty-five days or three months or whatever. Uh, I don't think, Larry, there's been any progress legislatively to.
Not that I'm aware of.
No, it's been talked about over the years. But it's, I don't think anything has ever changed with that.
You just have to talk them into not breaking the law.
So one of the hopes is, one of the positions that is going, has been approved to be added to the region's crisis system is the jail coordinator. The way it's laid out for us right now, we would share one with Clinton County, which I think is certainly feasible, we just don't have the volume here to need a full-time position, but. The idea, part, one of the ideas behind that is if somebody's in jail and they lose their Medicaid. That the jail coordinator would be aware of that and know when a potential date for releases from jail. They could help that person get that Medicaid application in, so there would be less of a gap after they're out of jail. If any gap at all. So. But those are, I would say, from a financial standpoint, those are probably the, the big topics that were discussed and still need to be finalized. The one, so you'll be getting an MOU and we'll need to look at a budget amendment. And then transfer the money. Um. So, the fund balance for the region still remains very high. We are expecting to see more bills come in, several, three contracts were approved by the board yesterday for signature. That will. Um, allow for some startup cost bills and then some actual service bills to be submitted to the region before June thirtieth. And two of the services directly. Um, increased access by Jackson County residents to a couple of. Evidence-based practice therapy programs that involve not only youth, but their families as well, their family programs, multi-systemic therapy is run by. Your French. And currently their referrals were only able to become, to come from juvenile court because that was the funder, so now we're opening up. More funding that doesn't record, require that juvenile court involvement. And they're also expanding it to be available to the five, the four outlined counties. One of the challenges with that is that service and the other one I'll mention are all services. That are basically out in the community, in the family's home, or maybe at the child's school or in the community elsewhere. So workforce. And time to provide that service obviously looks much different than if the families live in the Quad City area and. The workers just have to travel a matter of, you know, a few miles to get to their home, the other program is called Family Functional Therapy. Um, actually functional family therapy, I guess, uh, by Families Inc., which is a small organization that's been around for a long time, based out of West Branch. Similarly, the referrals to that program up to this point were only able to come through the Department of Human Services. So now again, we're offering an additional funding source to pull in families that don't necessarily have a formal, um, arrangement or involvement. With either juvenile court or DHS, so that's a good thing, that too is available now to the outlined counties. So that was a good thing, and some of the other, you, the board will be getting some more contracts at the main meeting. Some of the agencies have already experienced expenses, but they haven't been able to turn them in yet because contracts weren't finalized, so. We will be spending some money here between now and June thirtieth, that will help our fund balance, but I would say at this point, David didn't really talk about it yesterday. But I would say it's likely we will be a forty percent benchmark. Um. As I was talking to Brent about Jesse and Joe, the San Antonio police officers will be in the region Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday, they'll be here in Jackson County at three o'clock to tour the jail and then meet with law enforcement in the basement of the courthouse and. Anyone is welcome to attend that and. Those were probably the highlights, I would say, what did I miss?
Well, I told him about the classroom.
Classroom thing, yes, yes.
Well, that really, really surprised me.
I thought there might be a few, um, school buildings that would be interested, I. I do, don't have a concern that we're gonna be overrun and I didn't prior to issuing the letter of interest, either that we were gonna be overrun with. You know, hundred and twenty-two applications or twenty-three districts all applying or whatever.
They have some rooms like that in some of the schools now.
Just in Jefferson in Clinton.
In Clinton. Uh, Bettendorf had applied to the state for funding, for the state funding source that Jefferson Elementary and Clinton got their money. But was not awarded state dollars. It's. Yeah, I don't know where that'll go, we'll see what, I don't know if we're gonna talk with Aaron today at management team, we. Probably need to because obviously we're running short on time.
I only have one question, which I didn't ask yesterday. I, I did ask how many in our region where Glenwood, do we have anybody from Jackson County that's currently at Glenwood?
To my knowledge, no. Now, I can't say that I would know that for sure because the county. Does not have any involvement in payment or. Uh, we had a little bit of involvement with an individual, I believe we likely still have someone who lives at Woodward. Which is not affected by the one with decision. But no, to my knowledge, no.
But when, when, when Laurie said what the fee for the, and was it called Hasa House? That they, would they, they wanted Glen, the Glenwood area or the, uh. The county down there to come up with some of these houses to move these people into?
HCVS houses, half houses or.
Okay.
Group home type settings, yeah.
And, um, when she said what it would be a day, I, I about passed out.
Mm-hmm.
Eight hundred to a thousand dollars a day.
That's crazy.
Well, and the other thing that, uh, the. The regions have been tasked with, that she did talk about yesterday. Similar to the whole Glenwood Resource Center closing is, if you remember. Very briefly, probably I've talked about earth homes, intensive residential service homes. For individuals with mental health, primarily with mental health concerns that have a very high level of need. Regions that will be ending the year with a fund balance are now being, I believe I can say required, not just recommended. That they issue a request for a proposal to the providers within their region to establish these earth homes. These homes will be probably four to five people. Very, very high need individuals, so staff that have a lot of training. And there is a concern, the concern that always pops up is the language is written for these homes. That there's a no eject, no reject clause. So a base value to that, we're all thinking that means, oh my gosh. They have to accept everybody who's referred, and then once they get in there, they cannot, you know, evict them or, yeah, stop serving them. It's not quite that harsh. Uh, there are some parameters that the CEOs were able to identify that I believe the state will respect. And, and some of those have to do in terms of accepting referrals, if they're violent. If they, depending on their criminal history, if they're a registered sex offender. So there are still some scenarios where, um, uh, the provider of this. Setting this four to five person home couldn't not.
Say no.
Could say no, and then if they accept somebody and then that person lands in the hospital because of some of those kinds of behaviors, they could also say no or they can't come back. But I think the regions are waiting for DHS to write the RFP document. But it is required that we send it out to providers within our region. Now, this was a population of people that when the language was written, they anticipated there were maybe like a hundred and twenty people or so. That met that high level of criteria, what reminded me of that, Jack, is when you talk about the per diem. That is clearly eight hundred to a thousand, if not more a day. There may be situations where somebody would be referred to an earth home and it might actually. Would need one-on-one staffing in some cases for some hours of the day, maybe even need two-on-one, depending on the situation. So I don't know, we'll have any interest from providers within our region once that goes up.
When Laurie said there was twenty, twenty from the region, I kept thinking, I wonder how many of them refer Jackson County. I'm glad that. We don't, as far as your knowledge, have anybody.
Yeah, from Glenwood, to my knowledge, we don't have any. So there's two kind of, two things going on here, there's one with closing, those are all, um, what did she say? Five of the individuals will be going to Woodward because they have, um, significant medical needs in addition to behavioral needs. So there's Glenwood closing in Needington, um, and Glenwood is the one tasked with having to work with the families, the guardians. To find suitable placements and understandably so, many family members and guardians are very concerned about this. Because that person may have lived there for a number of years, it may be the only place that they really identify. because that person may have lived there for a number of years, it may be the only place that they really identify as home for themselves.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then the other aspect is this other group of individuals that have high needs for treating their mental health or mental illness. Can't get into an MHI or they feel, feel MHI isn't an appropriate placement, but they're not gonna be accepted into like a residential care facility that they want them in the community.
So this may be a silly question, so like where does imagine possibility stand in this processes like at Andrew Jackson or the two facilities that we have, two homes we haven't built?
Boy, it certainly isn't a silly question at all, um. You know, they could be a provider that if they really wanted to make the investment, they could, they could through, put a request, they could apply to become an Ursh provider. The, the thing that.
Their status now with the residents that they have, how, how, how are they classified?
Uh, the homes typically are individuals that are pretty stable. And even uh, if individuals are there due to having a diagnosis of a mental impairment, their skill set is, is significant enough that they can live in the community with limited staffing.
Cause I know like the ones that are in the father of Roethlisberger house, which is two doors down from our house. They, they, um, they're outside, you know, they're Scott mows the lawn, the other people help with the, and, you know, cleaning and doing stuff inside, they're pretty self-sufficient, they just need somebody basically to babysit and make sure they take their medication and all of that stuff. But Prairie House, I, I'm, I'm not sure, that's their more extreme cases, I understand.
Prairie House is a different level of, of licensing, so the half homes really are not even licensed as a facility because their idea is that they're integrated into the community. Prairie House is what they call an intermediate care facility, so that, that gets up there with a similar kind of credentialing for nursing home. Because they have significant medical needs in addition to maybe some behaviors. Andrew Jackson Care is licensed at a different level, yet at a residential care facility specific for purpose, for persons with mental illness. The difference between uh, the ICF or Prairie House and the RCF or Andrew Jackson is Andrew Jackson residents don't require as much medical attention and have as many significant physical health concerns as individuals that likely would live at Prairie House. So these Ursh Homes are kind of yet another level. Uh, very likely that people that would be at Andrew Jackson and get real active treatment might transition to an Ursh home. But it, they're all kind of unique in their own purpose that they serve in terms of what level of kind of care that they provide.
But the, but the ones that are at the Andrew Jackson Care, another part of their problem is they can be really aggressive.
Right, and that's one of the concerns of the individuals that an Ursh home is designed for, to an Ursh home is a house in a community, I mean, that's the concept that the federal government, that the state wants to have available is that they're integrated into neighborhoods and residential communities. And Imagine actually has, I can't count for sure, but I'm gonna say two for probably seven or eight of, of the community-based homes in Jackson County. They have some in Dubuque County, into Clinton County. They may have some in Scott County, I'm not sure, so yeah, they are an agency that could take a look at it. What it would mean, you know, a big investment of time and energy to find the staff and to get the staff.
That would be the big thing is the staff.
That workforce is really what shies, makes many providers who might have the capability of doing it from shying away.
Because I know the last time I talked to um, Imagine the Possibilities, he said, you know, they had so many openings and we just couldn't get people to apply.
Yeah, so the staff for the last two to three years of those agencies has really been overwhelmed with the demand, you know, you have a lot of supervisors of those homes who are doing direct services, who are actually covering shifts when somebody calls them sick or they don't have anybody employed to take a shift. So anybody associated with any kind of community-based housing is really really been under stress for the last several years and certainly since COVID, but even before COVID, the workforce was a concern prior to COVID as well. Because as you all know, if you figure it out, if you run a twenty-four hour facility, a lot of staff, a lot of hours to cover.
Kind of like the jail.
Yes, same thing, right.
You gotta cover for all your vacations and time off.
Right. Yep, and then unexpected absences and side sand. Any other questions?
No.
Thanks.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the meeting today? The nut.
You can go to recess again. You're gonna go to recess.
Because then we have to go make our motion to close session, you know, so at this time we'll recess the meeting. At this time, we'll call the special meeting, uh, interview meeting of the uh, board of supervisors. Um, we are going to be interviewing a candidate who has requested closed session. According to Iowa code, so um, at this time, could we have a motion to go into closed session?
Go move second.
Motion a second to go into closed session, all those in favor? I, motion carried. I did not believe you could make a motion in closed session.
We're not in closed session right now.
Motion to go into open session.
So you're gonna make a motion to leave the closed session and return to open session? Cause you can't make a motion in closed session, so that's why we just. So we need a motion to end the closed session.
End the closed session.
But that is.
But you're not in closed session.
Well, yes, you are, if you're saying. I thought the chairman just took you out of closed session.
Yes.
I don't know.
Okay.
Whatever you wanna do is fine with me, I don't care.
I would say that's probably.
So.
I think we've done it.
So it's not a motion, so chair.
Went back into open session.
Reconvene.
Reconvene.
Meeting.
Into open session. Okay.
And now we're back in open session.
Yeah.
And our regular meeting. If there's no further business before the board, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
No. We don't want to adjourn, you said we recess till tomorrow afternoon at five thirty.
Well, tomorrow was, tomorrow was another meeting, so you will. Correct.
I thought that's what you said earlier.
Okay, yes, we're just going to adjourn the meeting until tomorrow night's meeting.
Okay. And we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? I, motion carried. Meeting is adjourned.